Just a couple of redneck amigos, full of BS reviewing bourbon, tequila, rum, beer and more. Boozy spirits.
Studio and we have a special guest today. We have Jeff Hogg from the Northport City Council and also your insurance.
That's correct.
So, so tell us a little bit about yourself and the people that don't know.
Tell us about this beer first. I'll pour some beer while you talk.
Definitely like to drink.
He brought us some, some beer to try.
Well, I was at the establishment of World of Beer in Tuscaloosa and they have a lot of different types of beer from around the world that you can try. I had never seen this beer before. It looked kinda cool in the bottle. Don't normally get to see a blue bottle.
Yeah, that is cool.
And they had different versions of this. One's in a green bottle and it's called Cronenberg sixteen sixty-four. The blue bottle is Cronenberg sixteen sixty-four Blanc. So of course I had to try both to see which one I liked best.
Of course.
That was your favorite?
This was my favorite. It was an easy drinking beer. It's got a little citrus twist to it.
Five percent.
Yeah, five percent alcohol volume.
Brewed and bottled in France.
It's just got an easy taste to it. So I wanted you to try that.
This might be one of the fanciest things we've had on here.
I think it is. I think, once you taste it, I mean seriously, it's like it's got a little, you definitely get the citrus, the pop.
Oh yeah. It's like a almost blue moon, but not.
Not as heavy.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's very light. It's a, it's an easy drinking beer. It's good.
So where do you purchase this?
Well, no one really has this around, so I contacted Rashawn at the home package store, which I know y'all are very familiar with.
Oh yeah. Great guy.
And he, he has a great business and he will get you whatever you need and, and you know, try to find things that sell that people are looking for and he was able to find this.
That's awesome. Yeah.
Got it in and he's actually got some in stock as well because he thinks other people will
It's really good.
Really enjoy it.
We'll tag them on here, so maybe you can sell some more of it.
Absolutely.
But you said this is fairly expensive, right?
Yeah, I would, I would say this is probably for a six pack. I mean, probably twelve, thirteen.
Okay, that's not bad. Yeah.
Bucks, maybe.
It's good. I'm not a huge beer drinker, but it's pretty good though. You can drink that one.
It's a, it's an easy beer. But what you don't realize is most of the light beers are in the four percent range. And this is five, so it's, it packs a little punch for being a, a lighter.
I give it two thumbs up.
I do too. This is our little rating, uh,
I see that. Yep.
So you'd probably do two thumbs up on that, right?
I would definitely say it's amazing.
Yeah.
It's almost, it's almost like a blue moon and wine had a baby.
I can see that, yeah.
Yeah, I, I can't tell what the, I can taste the citrus. There's something else that's, um, I don't know if it's peach or what. I don't, I'm not a big peach fan, but there's something in here that
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know.
Interesting. So back to Matt's question.
Yeah.
What was your question?
Tell us a little bit.
There you go.
Just about you, the people that don't.
Finish it off. Okay. I'm gonna look up this beer and see what the flavors are, so we know.
Gotcha. A little bit about myself. I serve on the Northport City Council. Uh, this is my second term. I've been working with Northport since two thousand twelve. Uh, I was in a different role on the ZBA, which is our zoning board of adjustments. I ran for election in two thousand twelve, was unsuccessful. That made me a little bit hungrier to go back in two thousand sixteen. And, um, I was projected and polled to finish third in, in voting in two thousand sixteen. I made the runoff and led the runoff, actually, to get to the runoff and then won the outright election in two thousand sixteen. Uh, two thousand twenty, ran for reelection. And won and was able to be voted on by my peers to be the president of the Northport City Council. Uh, the previous term I had served in the pro tem role, which is basically our vice president of the council. And if you don't know the history of Northport government, the mayor is basically a figurehead in Northport. It's more of a ceremonial type role. There's only very few functions that the mayor role has, so the council president is actually the highest position that you could possibly get, even though it's not elected on by the whole city. It's elected by the peers of the council who feel like that person can lead the council in the, in the right direction. So very glad to have that title. Um, I'm not big into titles, but when your peers feel like you're
Yeah, that means a lot.
It does. So, uh, I'm glad, glad to do that and especially with the younger council, uh, everyone on the council in two thousand twenty, this was their first run in the election. So I'm the only one that had, was elected in two thousand sixteen that's still on board uh, at this point. So there's a lot of institutional knowledge that was lost, but yet I feel like I have a lot of institutional knowledge with going back to two thousand twelve with the city that I can pass along to the next generation.
Sometimes it's good to get new blood in there to to make changes.
It, it definitely is. And I know it sometime, at some point, my time will come too and that curtain call will, will end. And, uh, I just wanna make sure that we left the city better than we found it. So I know that sounds cliche, but that's, that's really what you wanna do.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm not a career politician. I don't, I just wanna make it better and, and see it thrive and
Of course, with being in that position, there's no controversy or nothing like that, right?
Absolutely not. Everybody loves me. I'm the most loved person in Northport, I can promise you.
It, it's gotta take thick skin to, to be in that role, cause you get so many people that
Yeah.
You can't please everybody. We all know that and there's
And Nick Saban says, if you wanna please everybody, go sell ice cream.
Exactly.
And, uh, and unfortunately, I think you could probably do that in Northport and some people would still be mad that you had chocolate instead of vanilla, so.
You're right.
It's a, it's a, it's an ongoing situation, but it's one that you definitely had to have thick skin.
And just roll with it.
And roll with it and, and make light of it, make fun of, fun of it and
That's the only way.
Yeah. And, and social media gives people a lot of avenues to say things that they wouldn't say to your face.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and that's the, and that's the issue too, is, is you have, you have the bullies on social media and
They would never say it in person, but they're big shots behind the computer screen.
Yeah, there's been so many times that I have seen a person out that, that I've known they have said all kinds of things. And they'll come up to me and just talk like they're my best friend.
Yeah, yeah.
But yet
You know what's going on.
I, I, I've seen what you've said, but I don't, I don't take it to heart. Um, I joke around about it and because I know at the end of the day, I'm Jeff.
Yeah.
I was Jeff before this title.
Yeah.
I'll be Jeff after that.
Yeah.
And, uh,
So what made you wanna run for political office initially?
Well.
Usually you want something to, to change usually.
Yeah, that, that's true.
Or you're not happy with what's going on.
So I guess it goes back to me being, uh, even in, even in grade school, elementary school. You know, I had ran for student government president then in elementary school and
I won SGA president.
Yeah.
Twelfth grade at ACA.
There you go.
I beat Nate Carden, the principal's son and star quarterback. I did a whole viral campaign before stuff became viral. I gave candy away to all the young kids.
No smear campaign.
I made, no, I made posters. It said fat people are harder to, easier to find when you have problems. Oh, basically before viral became viral, that was me through the whole school system, made bumper stickers.
It's the way to do it, is to be fun about it. And don't take it so serious.
No, and I, I did that, uh, eighth grade, same thing, twelfth grade as well. So my, my grandfather was always involved, not really in politics, but he was involved in community, um, involvement and efforts and, uh, real big and, and giving back, uh, like that. So I, I think I inherited a little bit of that growing up, watching him. And I wanted to do that myself. So when I went to college and moved here for the University of Alabama, I chose political sciences, uh, as one of my degrees, my major, along with English and I think at that point, I, I knew at some point I'd wanna get involved in something, whether it was local or state election. And so I just threw, threw my, threw my name in the hat and when my wife and I, uh, got married, she moved here from Tennessee and she come here and she felt like she was taken back twenty years because her because her city where she was from, right outside of Nashville, I mean, was really booming with, with department stores and restaurants and everything else. And in Northport at the time, we didn't really have anything and, and we're trying to change that and and change is hard for a lot of people, but, um, it's the same thing like with, and, and I've talked about this with Justin, I've talked about it with Giovanni with, with Jalapenos there on Rose Boulevard. Most people thought y'all were crazy when
Yeah, cause nothing was out there.
Well, nothing was there.
Nothing was there.
And you, and you built this nice looking building and look what it's done.
It was us and the school, I think. A few houses.
I think it's your number one location.
Does really well.
So, you know, I, everybody says if you build it, they'll come. You know, that's the old adage from, from the movie, but
Not necessarily. You have to
That's right.
Do your research and find out where, where everything's moving towards.
You do. You've gotta, you've gotta know and you've got to, you've gotta have buy-in from, from people.
Yeah.
And I think with, with Jalapenos there, I think you've got a lot of buy-in from people and, and you have your regulars and and everybody just seems like family there. I mean, so they, they've grown up there. Cause that's basically all there was to eat, except for McDonald's.
Yep.
Nobody can do that every day.
Yeah. Also to give, you know, you and the whole council credit, like past what, four or five years, like you can see how Northport's changed, like you said, talking about you know, your wife's, where she was from and how there wasn't nothing now. Now we got the whole new strip of Planet Fitness and all the restaurants opening there.
That's true.
I know every time you post something, you got fifty percent of people love it, fifty percent of people, you know, give you shit about it, but like, can't please everybody.
You can't. And, and that's, and that's basically me is, is, is I, I grew up and I, I knew I wanted to get involved, but then I think it really more resonated with me when, when I started having children too.
Yeah.
And, and I'm like, is this, is this where I want my children to grow up? And it had, Northport has all of the things that people want. I mean, you're right next to Tuscaloosa.
Yeah.
You know, there's, uh, you got a college town, but you've also got, there's, there's good shopping, there's good restaurants. But there's only, the only thing that divides us is the Black Warrior River. And that shouldn't, that shouldn't translate into two separate cities. I mean, from a, from a standpoint of what do they have versus what we have?
Yeah.
I think we can complement one another and still be two separate cities.
Just like when we had Mayor Maddox on here, he was talking about like, what can we do to help keep people here? That they don't wanna graduate and move away.
Yeah.
So I think with Tuscaloosa doing what they're doing and y'all doing what you're doing, it just helps add more value to
The community at home. Yeah.
Restaurants, all the stuff on the riverwalk that Northport has going on, the stuff like, hey, I can stay here and do all these activities. I don't have to move to Nashville or somewhere else.
Right. And, and we're, we're totally okay with, with people that live in Northport who may work in Tuscaloosa or, or go to Tuscaloosa to do some things.
Yeah.
But we wanna change that too, where the people that live in Tuscaloosa want to come to Northport for something.
Yeah. It's not, like you said, it's not a competition. It's a competition. Complement each other.
We, we will never be Tuscaloosa in terms of population or anything else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we need to know where our stand is in, in the, in the state. And right now we're the seventeenth largest city in Alabama. I think we're the second grow, second fastest growing city in Alabama. So and I've said it time and time again, we gotta act like it. You can't just sit back and, and be stagnant and
Yeah, absolutely.
Just want things to stay the same.
And of course, me being business owner, I love all the development around us. Jalapenos, like you were talking, there's houses there now and behind Grand Point, all this stuff they're building, like it's just more people. It's a lot of stuff back there.
It is a lot of stuff.
I saw that the other day. Have you seen that? He lives in Tuscaloosa.
I think Justin might've, he might've liked this beer.
It was good. I did, I did look it up while you were talking.
Okay.
I wasn't just on my phone. I looked it up. It said it's a white peach. That's the flavor you're tasting. Citrus notes, a touch of spice, a little white peach.
And I can taste it's a wheat beer.
Yeah, a wheat beer.
Yep.
That is a good one.
Taste that.
I'll have to go see over Rashawn.
Yeah, same here.
Yeah, Rashawn will, he will hook you up with anything that you need.
Oh yeah, he will. He's a good old dude.
So I, I told him, I said, I need Michelob Lite. And, and that, that sounds funny, but kids these days, I mean, if, if you're a college student and you say Michelob Lite, they don't have any clue what that is.
Natural Ice.
Yeah.
Some of those good ones.
They know Michelob Ultra.
Yep.
And while I, while I love craft beer, there's something about just having a good steady lager such as this or
Yeah, that's one. You could definitely just drink that all day long and not get super hammered and not too heavy on you.
Yeah, I think so too.
The next one we're gonna try, I'll go get it in a minute. It's actually a craft beer from Aslan. It's an IPA brewed with oranges.
Okay.
I don't think none of us have tried it yet, so it'll be interesting.
Is that on the top show?
Yeah.
I'll grab it.
You can grab it.
Cause I'm empty too.
And while Matt's grabbing that one, I got, I got a little surprised. I don't know if you noticed, you see my hat I got made?
I didn't even notice that. That is funny though.
I saw the Facebook comment last night, so I was like, don't make me a hat.
I can tell you, I, I have made it in the world. You, you know, you know, when a guy that people see as a politician, which I don't feel like I'm a politician, but you know you have made it when you have your own acronym or, or anything like that.
That's why I saw you posted that. I'm like, it's just a sticker I put on this hat. I was like, I, I think I was telling my wife, she's like, he might get mad at you. He don't, I know Jeff good enough. Like he's, he's gonna get a kick out of it.
I just think it means that I'm fantastic, correct?
Might not even take the sticker off. It looks good.
It does look good. I need one. I'll wear it to the next council meeting.
I know you get a kick out of that.
Well, you know, that's, that's where the whole boss hog
Yeah.
Comment come from. Um, it's weird. I mean, growing, growing up as a child with the last name Hog, you in, being an eighties baby. I mean, Dix of Hazard was big. You know, having that last name, people called me boss all my life.
That's awesome.
You know, I'm, I was used to that. When I moved to Alabama, went to the university, you know, nobody knew me here, so they didn't call me boss and and most time probably wasn't thinking about back in the eighties with, with that. And, um, a guy on social media a few years ago was mad about something and was com, was complaining about everything and just said, oh, boss hog.
Just went with it.
Yeah, I'm like, let's, let's roll with it. I had Aslan and everything and, uh,
I think that's why we get along. Cause like when I was growing up at school, I was always chubby kid. So somebody called me like, oh, look, there's Big J.
Yeah.
And that just ended up being my nickname. I'm like, cool, I like it. He's like, oh, I was trying to make fun of you, but now like you have, you know, you're telling everybody to call you Big J. That's what you did with boss hog, you just owned it.
You do have to own it.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't, uh, I don't have any issues with people disagreeing with me or, or saying anything about me because at the end of the day, the only people that I care about that, I mean, that really, that really know me or my family.
Yeah.
I mean, I do care what my friends think. I do care what other people think, but not as much as I do
Right.
The people who I live in the same household with.
And of course, a lot of people think, you know, you're on the city council, you're making millions of dollars now and you're doing all this stuff like, you know.
We all have full-time jobs.
Exactly.
This is a part-time position and, uh, and most time people don't realize that we make eighty-five hundred dollars a year. Um, it's like seven hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
Uh, the council president makes a little bit more, so I'm lining my pockets.
Oh yeah.
Well, you know, two thousand, two thousand dollars more, yeah. A year. Uh, and, and for all the crap you have to put up with.
Absolutely.
It's not worth it, but it's not about the money. It's, it's about what you're trying to do and if, if you could really line your pockets and make all the money locally, like people think you can.
Yeah.
Everybody would run for this office.
Yeah.
They really would.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But most of the time, people don't, people don't run for office. They
They just wanna stand on the sideline and bark and bitch the whole time.
Absolutely. And, and I think it's probably not a popular opinion. I know like you're talking, you have your critics, but that's why I always liked you, cause you was like, you put it out there like the guy with the, you know, FJH, like, hey, I love it. Thanks. I put it up. Here's, here's what this dude said. And I told somebody, it's probably not a compliment. Everybody would love it. You'll probably like it. I was like, you're like the Elon in Northport. Like Jeff just doesn't give a shit. He'll post it like, if you say something bad about him, he'll, he'll copy it like James Span does. Hey, look at this dude. He doesn't like my news, he doesn't like my weather, weather coverage. Jeff's like, hey, this guy doesn't like, you know, that we're doing this.
And I think that's why we all get along.
Absolutely, yeah.
Is because we're all like that.
Yeah.
You know, cause you're never gonna please everybody. And if you wanna please everybody, that's not me at all. And I know it's not you or you. We all wanna do our thing and have fun and hopefully not hurt anybody in the meantime, but
No, I wanna be, I wanna be as respectful as I can be.
Right.
But, but I'm not gonna bow down just because they're calling your name or whatever, like they're telling you, you gotta resign.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna treat people not how I wanna be treated. I treat people how they treat me.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's, I think that's the issue is, is I would love to be that way of, of treat people how I wanna be treated. But then again, a lot of those people get ran over.
Yeah.
That's true.
And I don't wanna be ran over. I don't have to be ran over.
Yeah.
Like you always say, if you don't like me, vote me out.
That's right.
You know, what, twenty twenty-five?
Twenty, twenty twenty-five.
You're like, if you don't like me, vote me out, but I gotta vote it in.
Yeah. And, and almost, I, I can't remember, seventy or eighty percent.
Yeah.
That's strong.
So I mean, it was, it was very strong.
Yeah.
And, and I, and I think the majority, and I say this all the time, I think the majority understands what we're trying to do. But it's the vocal minority that always, you know, usually has an issue. And, and that's fine. Everybody has an opinion. Everybody needs to be heard. But then again, don't be, don't be closed-minded. Listen, listen to what is, what is going on as well. Because if you have a majority that wants something or you have a majority of council that wants something, like last night, for instance, we had an RFP out for the community center park area. Okay. Personally, and I, and I'm, I'm not shy to say this, I think the building looks terrible. I think
I agree with you.
It is old and outdated. I think there shouldn't be a playground next to the busiest
Absolutely.
Highway.
And a gas station.
And a gas station.
Yeah.
That's, that's in Northboard. I think it, I think it could serve in a better location and that could be used as a better retail spot or something.
To bring in some revenue.
To bring, to bring in revenue.
Yes.
I do not wanna see us get rid of a park.
Right.
Or a community center that's used.
Which a lot of people, they put it that way that you're getting rid of it.
Yeah.
When, from the beginning, you're like, we're moving it, we're changing it to X dislocation.
Build a new one. I wanted to build a state of the art one that
Looks nice.
That looks very nice.
Multi-purpose and everything else, right?
Correct.
Yep.
That was, that was my goal. And I said that from the beginning. Whatever they want to purchase this property for, which the RFP was one point one million. Every cent of that, I don't wanna go into the general fund. I don't want it to go into the water park, even though I'm a big water park guy. I want it going back into the community for a new community center. Whether that's refurbishing something else and make it look really nice, or it's building from ground up. But we know how construction costs are these days. And I think that's what what I'm trying to say is last night we decided to not go through with the RFP. And it wasn't, it wasn't my idea. It was Councilwoman Bobo's idea. She said, you know, this due diligence period, um, it's over with. We can either extend it or we can stop it. And she wanted to stop it. I'm not gonna stand in that way. That's
Yeah, that's her district, right?
Yeah, that's her district. I, I have a lot of things that I wanna see done. This one is not high on my priority list. Now, am I for
Yeah.
Doing something better? Absolutely.
And I think most people in Northport are.
I, I do too.
In Tuscaloosa too.
I think it's the vocal minority that's not, but it's also
They're usually the loudest too.
They are the loudest. And, and you have the people in, in her district, in that area that's very close to it. And I get that because if, if people in my district were saying the same thing, it's a little, it's a little different because you represent those people.
Yeah.
Me personally, I don't represent the people that live down that way.
Right.
That's not my district. So the, their voice does matter. I try to hear that out, but yet I try to listen to my district as well that what are you wanting to see? They're wanting, they're wanting to see more restaurants and more things to do for families and kids.
Sure.
And that's what I'm trying to focus on, but if this area says no, and the council people of that district say, I don't think that's a good idea, then that's fine. But I do think we should allow council people of their districts to, to work that. District one and district two, it butts up right there. I think myself, district four, district three, we all need to stay out of it. We don't really need to have an opinion. We need to, we need to listen to our other council members and say
Yeah, cause they're, that's their district.
What, what do you wanna see? And, and then we can go forward from there. But that's, that's just the way I personally feel and
You think it'll be revisited later on and, or you think it's just
You know, I, I don't know. But I think, uh, I think the way that it was presented last night, um, about trying to rehab that, trying to do something different there. Personally, I think if we're gonna if we're gonna throw lipstick on a pig.
Do it somewhere else.
You know, I, I think we should do it some, but, but then again,
Hey, hey, whistle pig whiskey's got a boss hog whiskey.
They do.
And they've got it at ABC. They've got two left.
I was gonna buy, I was gonna buy.
Five ninety-nine.
I was gonna buy it and bring it today, boys.
It was five ninety-nine. I'm like
Yeah.
I thought about it.
So you, so you like me, but not that much? Okay.
That's a lot.
FJH.
That's what I said. I was like, five fifty, no.
What about?
No, five ninety-nine.
Five ninety-nine, sorry.
It was, yeah.
Now the, the lowest I've seen it is seven forty-nine. So that's
That's on sale then.
Yeah.
And I still thought about getting one for my collection, but
You know, I do wanna, I do wanna get one.
Yeah.
It is a cool looking bottle.
It is.
Now I'm trying to, I'm trying to get Pappy as well.
It's alright.
Look, I'm
That's the bourbon snob right here. He's got that stuff.
I, I like, I like Pappy.
Which one?
Huh? The fifteen.
Fifteen.
That's the only one I've ever had.
Okay.
But if, if you put that in a blind taste test with some others.
Yeah.
And tell me what they cost. And I don't know.
You're gonna lose.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I would never know.
It's good, but if you can get it for like retail, it's fantastic. If you pay fifteen hundred dollars for it, it's dumb.
Yeah.
I paid both, so.
Which one tasted better?
I don't know.
The regular price one?
I'm sure. And I, I actually like the ten year better than the twelve or fifteen.
Okay, so I've, I've only had the fifteen, but
Come over to the house one day, we'll try them out.
Okay.
So tell us about the new sports.
That, that is gonna be great.
It is.
That's one of those things I said, it's gonna, people wanna stay in there. There's stuff to do. I don't have to move to Oak Mountain, somewhere else like.
Yeah.
My backyard, there's stuff to do now.
Do, do you know that most people, and if you have children, and I think most parents will tell you, most of their disposable income is spent on their children.
All, all of the fucking income.
Yeah. That and alcohol.
I know, we can all three drink to that.
But it kinda goes hand in hand. You drink the alcohol because you have the children.
Exactly.
That is also true. And Jeff's, Jeff's children are younger than ours. How old's your oldest?
Twenty-two.
I know you had twenty-two, what the hell?
Yeah.
Which one?
Uh, Hayden. I forgot about Hayden. Yeah, he, he lives in Tennessee.
Forgot about Hayden.
Yeah.
Then the second.
Yeah, she's almost sixteen.
Okay, okay, that's why I was, I was thinking she was the oldest.
Yeah.
So you're getting there.
And then, uh, and then the next one will be fifteen on her birthday, and then, and then the youngest will be nine on her birthday, so.
All girls, just like me, going through it.
Except, except for the oldest, he's a boy, so.
Yeah, I for, I forgot about Hayden.
I got to, I got to experience that. He's a, uh, he's a bonus child of mine. That was my wife's child, but, uh, but I got him when he was, when he was twelve.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I remember all that, yeah.
And he was, uh, he was into every damn thing. And, uh, uh, but, but you know, looking back, you know, sometimes I thought, this is, this is crazy because at the time I had, young girls and all they did was just wanna love on me and, you know, you know, daddy, daddy played Barbies with, you know, or something. And then, and I got this boy at twelve that's going through all these different hormones that's, out here just breaking every damn thing in the house. And it was totally different, so, uh, but it was, it was definitely fun to, to see that though, of, of the changes of, of having a male versus a female. And I've tried for a female, I mean, excuse me, a male, um, plenty of times. And, uh, my wife says, no more. And, uh, my, my checkbook says no more.
I agree.
I agree. Like you said, that's why we drink.
Those girls are expensive too.
They are.
I know, we're, we're looking at, at vehicles right now cuz she's about to turn sixteen. Trying to give her parameters and, you know, my wife and I, we're, we're like, we're, we're gonna be in this budget. And, and it needs to be this, and of course, everything she sends us.
Triple budget. It's out of that budget.
Yeah, it's way out of the budget, you know.
It's giving me a flashbacks. Those rough, those rough conversations.
Yeah.
Now, this, this beer right here, what it, what is this?
Asselin Brewing Company. It is a IPA brewed with oranges. I think it's six point five percent.
It might be the oranges. I don't know. I don't like oranges myself, but, um, I'm usually not a big IPA guy. This.
So both of them together?
This right here, though.
It's pretty good.
This is for, for an IPA, cuz I'm, I'm usually not an IPA guy. I, I would give this one two thumbs up for an IPA.
Nice. It's different. That's what they make a unicorn vomit. It's a triple IPA. They have a watermelon. My wife doesn't drink beer, barely drinks much alcohol. She loves that beer. She'll just sit there and just shotgun.
I had some in the fridge and my son grabbed one last weekend.
Good stuff.
And this is good.
But, but you know, usually IPAs have an aftertaste.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. This is not.
I don't have an aftertaste on this.
Maybe the oranges maybe kinda chill it out.
Yeah, and the, the aftertaste might be something like fruity, um, not.
It's not hoppy and all like your normal IPAs.
They make a really, tons of really good beers at this place. Asselin.
What's the brewer, what's the brewery?
It is out of Alexandria, Virginia.
Okay.
Asselin, Asselin Beer Company.
And whoever does their cans.
It's like the Willy Wonka.
They are.
Just always something cool. And they're usually like, I don't know this particular one, but usually like, like the watermelon unicorn vomit.
Mm-hmm.
My wife's like, I love this. Let's get some more. I called my rep. It's gone. It's like seasonal, that's it. I'm like, oh shit.
Lucy had one more left when I was there.
I got a whole case.
Okay.
He called me, like, I found one case in Birmingham. You wanted it? I'm like, yes.
Do you, do you ever have anything like this at any of your stores? I mean, do you?
We try, we've tried it all of them, but it doesn't really catch on for us. Downtown, we've had, we have a couple downtown. But like, I'll promote it. I'll make posters. I'll put it on Facebook, but everybody comes in jalapenos. They want a margarita.
Yep.
They want a beer.
Yep.
It's, it's hard to try something different.
Yeah, usually you, they wanna like a Corona or a Modelo or a, a Mexican type.
A Michelob Light or something like that. But I, I've tried, cuz I like different craft beers.
Yeah.
We've tried some of Bo's stuff at Druid City and like, nothing just really catches on.
Well, I can tell you, everything on the jalapenos downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Bar menu, that catches on cuz I.
Yeah.
I can drink everything on there.
Appreciate it. That was, that was all from my brain.
I, I know.
That was a lot of work.
You did a lot, I mean, seriously, you did a lot of, and I had to say this, research.
Yeah, I did, yeah. Actual research, actually research and research.
Cuz I remember before y'all were open and I would talk to you and, I mean, you, you'd be just.
Trying stuff, yeah.
Trying different things together.
Absolutely, yeah. I had my tastier come over and like, hey, let's try this. That's gross. Like, mark it off the list. Let's try this one.
You know.
It was a lot of drunk nights to get it going good so that people can enjoy it.
I, I will, I'm not afraid to admit this, but that, um.
Pink Taco.
Pink Taco.
I know, I know what you're gonna say.
And, and the, and the prickly in pink.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not afraid to admit that. Those are, those are really, really good drinks.
That was actually one drink together that I almost basically split the kinda ingredients and came up with two different. Cause one was margarita base and one was more cocktail base. So we came up with two different ones.
Nice.
I just wonder if that, uh, prickly in pink, if it's the tain, is it tain?
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah.
I think that sets it apart because.
It does, yeah, a little different.
It's sweet, but then it has.
And that was like the tain, it didn't work with a margarita.
Yeah.
But I wanted the name, Pink Taco Margarita.
Of course you did. So I thought, I thought that was really good. We.
Thank you.
We were there the other night and, uh, able to have a few drinks and.
It's just something different.
Yeah.
Than some of those, like even the pink taco, you can buy it in Northport now.
Oh, really?
We transitioned it over there. It's on the menu.
I haven't even, I haven't even looked at it, but every time I go to the Northport location.
You know what you're gonna get.
I never get a menu. I, I know exactly what I want.
Next time you go, get a menu, look at it.
I will look. The, uh, pork belly tacos I know are on there now.
Pork belly, the pink tacos on there, the mamacitas on there.
That's good.
You try that one yet?
Yeah, that's a good one too.
And that's just me just mixing stuff up at the house and see what's good and what's bad.
I think I've tried all of them.
I think you have.
I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
Good thing, a bad thing.
Stimulating the economy out there, so.
Yeah, but like I said, I've tried different craft beers. It's just so hard. Even we were talking about with Kadeen Sessions the other day, like cocktails. I'll come up with a cocktail that's just absolutely amazing. You know, say all, all of us like it. My friends like it. Put it on the menu. Nobody buys it.
Mm-hmm.
And I'll tell people like, order this. Ah, I don't wanna, I just want a margarita.
Yeah, I know.
And it's just heartbreaking. I was like, man, that was so good.
Yeah.
You just try it. Then like, you know, like the pink taco, you tried it. You're like, this is really good.
It is.
Now I want it.
Yeah.
But it's tough. Same thing with the beer, like I'll say this one. This is great. Let's have it at Jalapenos.
Yeah.
Nobody buys it. So I end up with like four cases at my house.
Is that a bad thing?
Not a bad thing. I guess from a sales point, it's a bad thing cuz I want people, I want people to try new stuff and enjoy it.
Yeah, true.
But they don't want, which correlates to what you're saying.
Once again, yeah.
They don't like change.
People don't like change and, uh.
I tell the story all the time, like somebody comes in, I want, you know, Mexican chicken fingers, rice and beans.
Yeah.
Try the gumbo. That's what, where the home of the heated gumbo, try it out. No, it sounds gross. I was like, order it. If you don't like it, I'll take it away and bring your chicken fingers and pay for both.
Yeah.
No, give me chicken fingers. So come on.
I think that's how, I think that's how we, my wife and I really started drinking at the downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Location because, uh, one night Giovanni was there.
Mm-hmm.
And Juan was there.
Yeah.
And both of them were bringing out little bitty glasses saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Try this one, try this one. And, and the more we tried, we're like, I'm gonna order that next time. Order that one then.
I think, I think I was there that night.
You might have been.
Thing was a, thing was about a year ago when I had some kinda Christmas party cuz we opened in December.
Yeah.
I think you had Christie with you and Woodrow was with you. Was it that night maybe?
Yes, we, we came, we had a Christmas party at the.
Okay, came from the.
Uh, President's Mansion.
That's it. Yeah, I was there that night.
And we stopped by there, yeah. And I think y'all just, uh, laid out a couple of different things and said, try it.
Think I brought you a benevolent cocktail?
Yeah, you did.
The whole table busted out.
There was, there was one that was, uh, that, uh, y'all lit on, like a pepper or something.
Mm-hmm. That's still a big seller.
Yeah. It's a, it's a very cool looking drink. I had, I had that outside one night. And I was like, everybody, I was like, everybody looked this. And they lit it and you couldn't tell outside. And they're like.
And that, that went into a lot of testing as well at my house.
Yeah.
I tried all kinda different liqueurs, rums, vodkas, like see what lit on fire. Like turn the lights off, turn the lights on and kinda figure out, like you said, where you could see it inside the restaurant.
But did you burn yourself?
Oh, yeah, a couple times. The best one I actually found, it was a, uh, let me think, a lemon extract. It made the best damn fire. But for a little bottle, it was like twenty bucks. So economically, it wasn't any good, but it made the best fire.
Do you have a bottle of that still?
Yeah, I do.
Can we light some shit on fire today?
I don't have it with me. If I did, if I did, we would. We'd light everything on fire. If you ever do it at your house, if you sprinkle cinnamon on top of it, cinnamon will make sparkles everywhere. But then I found out people are allergic to cinnamon and have a reaction, so cut that one out the menu.
Do you, do you have much of that with, uh, food allergies?
Not really. Cuz we, we tell people like, obviously it says on the menu what it's made out of and, you know, if they get more. I would say most of it's shrimp allergies that people, which I'm really surprised. There's a lot of people with shrimp allergies.
Yeah, shellfish and.
Yeah, cuz like when we do the tequila tasting experience downtown, one of the dishes of the shrimp cocktail. So we ask people, is anybody allergic? Start raising their hand. We're like, wow, there's so many people. Cuz usually if you order something, you're just like, I'm gonna order chicken. But when you're giving them what they're gonna eat, you have to ask them, of course.
Gotcha.
So it's interesting.
Grabbing a brew.
Grab, which one are you grabbing? Grab that Malta Malachita. Up, 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 that one. We hadn't tried that one yet. That's some kinda lime beer.
So have you tried that Kentucky cold snack that I see right there in the blue?
I have not. Is it good?
No.
Not. I got that from one of the reps. Told us to try it out.
I mean, we, we went to, I had that.
Hall.
I can't remember where. It was on a, it was on a trip that my wife and I took and maybe it was Los Angeles. I can't remember where it was at. But, uh, we went to a speakeasy.
Okay.
And we go, we go into the speakeasy and I'm like.
Cool.
What do y'all have? It was very, it was very small and they only had a few things to choose from on the menu. And at the time, I was like, I've been drinking bourbon all day. So I just wanna beer. They said, well, try this. Maybe it's because I was drinking bourbon all day and I had that after and I'm like, it wasn't that good. May, maybe that's what it is. Maybe, maybe it is that good. I don't know.
I don't know. I don't think, I don't think it is.
But they said, they said it was a good seller for them.
It's probably like a Pat's Blue Ribbon or something, maybe. That's a good seller, but it's not good. So this one is still hall brewing. It's actually out of Trussville.
Uh-huh.
Malachiti, I don't know if that's how you say it. It's a wheat ale brewed with lime.
Have you seen Trussville lately? Would they have the breweries and?
The Ferris, that stage and all, yes. Can we do something like that in Northport?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at.
Can we get a brewery over there too?
Dispensary.
It's funny, it's funny thing.
Dispensary. Yeah, like where the community center was, can we put a dispensary?
And a brewery.
There is a.
I'll put a playground up. I don't care.
We can use the same damn building.
There is a dispensary coming to Northport.
Nice.
Okay, and brewery, um.
Oh shit, that's a good beer.
It is good.
We have definitely tried to get some breweries. And a lot of people think Northport and they think, can't do alcohol in Northport. We can't get alcohol. Th- this is a new council. This is, this is ones that, I mean, of course, we don't want you to, to bring any riffraff and, and have a club that's gonna, gonna bring any, anything that we don't want.
Yeah.
But for responsible people that just wanna go and have a drink.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's okay.
Yeah, for sure.
I mean.
You don't wanna nightclub over there, but a brewery or a high-end cocktail bar.
I'm, I'm not, I'm okay with a nightclub.
Yeah.
Okay, as long, as long as you have parameters that you set.
Right.
And people abide by it. It's, it's the ones that want to, um, to make things a gray area, I guess. Um, you know, that, that you can have different people that, that wanna, that wanna take advantage of the situation.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
And I, and I think, I think some of those things could, could happen because there are a lot of, um, a lot of young families in Northport.
Mm-hmm.
And I think, I think sometimes moms and dads just wanna go out and have a bottle of wine with a nice dinner. And, and just have some conversation.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, sometimes it, that's what it's all about. I mean, it's.
Sometimes you need that.
Yeah, and, and you don't even have to drink, but sometimes, I mean, just go into a, just go into a place that you can, that you can fellowship and, and be with friends is always a good thing.
Yeah.
Um, and we see a lot with, um, I mean, there's a lot of, things going on in the world in terms of, uh, people that have different kinda mental issues.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's because our phones and our television and you can get movies right there at your house. Nobody, nobody gets out and speaks anymore.
Exactly, yeah.
And has those conversations. And I try to tell that to my kids too, to.
Same thing.
To conversate, but, um, but then there's some times that they're driving me nuts and I'm like, just get on your phone. Okay, let me try this one here.
It's, it's really good.
It is good.
It's different tasting.
Steel Hall puts out some good stuff.
It's first Steel Hall I've had.
It's different.
That's different.
Yeah.
Has that wheat taste to it, but that lime gives it like a, some kinda acidity in the back end almost.
Okay, it's a wheat ale.
With lime, five percent. It's different.
What is it? This tastes like something that you have in your restaurants.
I was gonna say, it tastes almost like a, a Mexican beer. Yeah.
There, there's a, there's a Mexican beer that y'all have that.
I don't know. I don't know which one that would be.
It's not, it's a lot lighter. It's not as rich as this, but there's something to it.
Maybe one of the Coronas maybe, or?
I'm wanting to say it's, um, it's not Tecate. It's, uh.
There's Victoria, Tecate, Soul.
Could be, I'm not sure.
Soul with the lime. I can tell you what it would taste, yeah.
With, a lot richer though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, I'm also a beer snob. Don't like any of those beers. I just like fancy craft beers.
You are a snob.
Uh, I only like three ti- three kinds of beer.
Which ones?
Well, it's draft, bottled and canned.
Same. I like that.
So you said, said you got a dispensary coming? Let's not skip over that.
Medicinal purposes only, I'm sure.
Coming where the tire store was by my neighborhood?
Well, that was a mess.
I'm disappointed I can't get my tires rotated next door to my neighborhood.
I don't know why, but, uh, but, but they have a, they, they follow Publix supermarkets.
And like you said, like, that's not us doing it, like.
Yeah.
I can't tell them, hey, you can't come here because of your tire store.
Yeah.
Right.
You can't profile or whatever you wanna call it. Like, they're a business.
They're a business.
I know everybody gave y'all hell about it and you're like, that wasn't us, like, zoned, it worked. If it passes, like, that's on them, not on us.
Yeah.
Which I respected that one, y'all, even though I thought it was stupid for the company to put a tire store next to all these residential neighborhoods.
I, I can't figure that out, but, but then again, it must work for them because they're a national chain and they know what they're doing.
You wanna be where the people are and there's a lot of people up there.
Yeah, and the neighborhood, they were, they were stirred up about it. And I was, and I was stirring it too.
No, you aren't.
No, you know. You know, I, I don't have an issue with, with them at all. But my, my whole point was, before you go spend millions of dollars on a brand new building, make the one you have in Northport already.
Yeah, it's true too.
Look better.
Across from the community center.
Yeah.
It is.
It is. And, and it is pretty, pretty rough.
Yeah, maybe they, maybe they were just trying to coincide with, with.
Average out.
Yeah. But the, the new one that they built, um, close to the dam there in Tuscaloosa in the three, five, four, oh, six area.[1431.41] That's a beautiful, that's a beautiful buil- building.
It's a weird spot for it.
Very weird.
It's beautiful, like you said, but it's just weird.
And it's in front of a Publix. I don't, I don't get it, but. Everybody's got their business models and.
They know what they're doing. Like people, like you said, people thought we were crazy building jalapenos.
That's true.
So maybe we're the stupid people. I don't think so, but you'll never know.
Hey, I will trade you my line of, of my pockets for the city. For what jalapenos does.
Pretty sure Mavis does a whole lot more than we do. They got a lot of locations, so they might know what they're doing.
Can you tell us about this water park?
Absolutely. I can take a little bit about it.
Fuck, I, I was gonna, I was gonna bring some inflatables to wear and I forgot.
We should have.
Dude, I, I'm excited about it. I really am.
You know, this, it's actually grown bigger than what I ever imagined. I, I can tell you the backstory on this if y'all want to hear it.
Yeah, for sure.
So in two thousand nineteen. We were, we were in the, in the mix with. Uh, a movie theater.
Oh, that was over by Loews and stuff, right?
And some, well, that was one location. We, we had never nailed down, but they, that was, that was one location. And also some family entertainment uh, as well. We were right at the, at the end of that where it was going to be. A done deal. Like we had already contracted out legal terms, everything. We had a contract. It was signed by the city. To go forward with the council vote. And the guy says. I'm sorry. We've worked a year and a half on this. I just got word that somebody wants to purchase. My whole portfolio of movie theaters. And they were out of Texas. And he says, I, I forget how old he was. He was fifty-five, sixteen. He's like. I could retire right now and sell all of this. And I'm like, I can't, I can't fault you for that. He said, so. He said, so I can, I can talk to them. We can make this sale and I can talk to them about the next location if they want to expand. You know, because we've come so far and we've done all of our due diligence. We've done all the testing. And so. At that point, I mean, you work a year and a half on something and then it.
Disappears?
Disappears on you overnight because I talked to him the day before. And he says, you know, we're ready. My attorney's looking over everything. Looks great. I'm gonna fly to Alabama. We're gonna get together. This is at the end of December. And then the next day he calls me and goes, hey, between yesterday, our conversation, I had an offer for, for my business. And so at that point, I mean, the wind just was taken out of my sail because that's what I had ran on was. Trying to make something that was going to be family friendly for everybody. And at that point. From January up until March. I'm researching everything out there that municipalities do. Around the country. What can you offer that you can, I mean. A municipality can't go out and typically and own an arcade or, you know, or, or go carts or anything else. But what did I see the other municipalities were doing and a lot of them were doing different types of water features and water parks? Even Tuscaloosa. You know, in, in Para have. You know, a few water slides and some pools and stuff, but I'm talking about actual water park. And so I brought this out and I just put it on Facebook and said. Hey, if the, I know you all want something for, for families. If the city were able to, to do this, what do you think about it? And I'm telling you, that was, that was the most likes, most comments, most everything I've possibly ever seen on Facebook. There was no F J H at that point.
There's a few in there, I think.
Yeah, maybe.
But mo- mostly, mostly positive.
So at that time, it was like, okay, well, there's, there's a lot of people that think this is, this is something to look at. And so we. We proceeded further. I looked at different things. I put together a presentation. And I think I put together the presentation on. March the second of twenty twenty is what, is on a Monday and gave that presentation. We asked for comments out of the audience. Everybody was very positive. One guy got, gets up. And we know this guy and he. Usually says some off the wall stuff and he says. It wasn't you. And he says. The coronavirus will kill a water park. And people laughed. It was like, what is this guy talking about? Two weeks later, the whole world shut down.
Yeah, that was fault you.
The whole world shut down.
That is crazy.
And I'm sitting here going. We have this traction with the movie theater and another family entertainment venues.
What else can go wrong?
We got traction on this and then that go, and that goes wrong because the whole world shut down. So we revisited it and finally we're, we're here to the point where. Um, I'd say in the next month or two, we'll finally have the renderings of the drawings of the final plan, the master plan. And then we can begin construction in the, in the spring of.
Same thing on break ground next year? Going forward, approved and everything already?
Oh, yeah. And the money's already set. Everything's good. We just have to get to that point. Because now we know all this from behind the scenes. You know, and, and people don't ever see what goes on with engineering and all the reports that we get.
Due diligence you did. You didn't say, let's build a water park. Hey, Matt, design this one. We're gonna build it next week. Like, what, three years ago you started the idea? And went through the process and make sure the money's good, the plans are good.
I've, I've been to different conferences all over the United States. I have gone to see some, some different water parks all over the United States. And we're trying to pull the best things that we possibly can from different, different ways of thinking because. You want to make cer- certain that you do something that's tried and true, that people are gonna love, but you also want to put in something that's newer. That may, that may work, may not work. I mean, but, but it's cool at the moment. And my biggest thing too is if we do this and we're spending taxpayer dollars, that we make this all inclusive. This is, this is accessible for everybody. There's sensory areas for, for kids with, that have autism. There's also any that have physical disabilities. You know, there's the, these. These wheelchairs. They cost about eight thousand dollars a piece. But they can go into water. They, they can be, they can be raised into certain features too. That's the kind of things that I want to see is that. All children, no matter what their ability is.
Be a part of it.
Can be a part of it and that we can all come together as, as one big community here in Tuscaloosa County. And also for people that are traveling in for ballparks and everything else. To see that Northport is an all inclusive city that, that we want people to bring their families to this and.
That's something Tuscaloosa doesn't have a water park. So like you said, people come Northport to do some stuff, go to Tuscaloosa, go do amphitheater, go to concerts where they help each other out.
You know, there's, there's been, there's been questions too of, hey, is your water park gonna have alcohol? Absolutely. Is your.
On location.
Is your little league sports complex gonna have alcohol? Absolutely. I mean. And then people go, people look at you like you're crazy. But. From a sports complex standpoint, how many times do you see these unruly parents? There's no alcohol involved.
That's true.
So if you want to be unruly, you're gonna be unruly regardless if you're drinking alcohol.
Or like if you're going to a water park with your kids and they have some alcohol or something there, you're like, okay, I can go have a couple daiquiris and drinks, me and wife, the kids can play on the slides.
I'm gonna sit in the cabana. Y'all go have fun. Come back here in a, come back here in an hour.
More likely to go, you know, a couple of times, a few more times a year instead of like, they don't have alcohol, they don't have food. I'm bored out my damn mind like. Just smart.
So, so you want to make sure that you include everybody. When I go back to all in, all inclusive on that. The fact is. If you don't want to drink. You don't have to drink. But you don't want to say just because you don't drink. Somebody else can. I, I don't, I don't think that's a good model for anything.
And I think this water park is gonna be, if you don't want to get in the water. You can still do whatever you, I mean, it's gonna. It's gonna be a game changer.
Lives in the same site.
Yeah, or we can go to the community center. We could square dance. I don't know.
If that's what you like to do, I'm okay with it. Maybe pick up some folk art on the way.
Yeah, there you go. Some good segues.
So that does, that is a great segue. So what's going on with Kentucky? Festival.
I, I don't know if you. Saw the council meeting last night, but our city attorney. Basically come out and. Gave all the facts.
And there's definitely two sides to every story.
Well, there's one side and then there's Kentucky's side. And I can, and I can, and I can say that because no- normally I would say there's always two sides to a story. But when, when Kentucky comes out. And has an email. That the city was able to get, that was to their board of directors that we were not supposed to have. When it comes out and says. That they. Were hiring a media consultant. To set the narrative against Northport. Okay, number one. Why do you need a media consultant? And number two, why are you trying to do a narrative? If you're telling the truth, you don't need a media consultant and you don't need a narrative. State the facts and let it speak for themselves. And I think that's what our, our city attorney went through everything last night. And gave. A very good presentation of timelines and what happened. It's clear as everything now. I didn't know, I didn't know everything. But after listening to that. And he backed it up with. With various.
Factual evidence.
Factual evidence. You can see that. They have been in the, in the works of trying to move. The festival.
I got you.
And, and it's also when seventeen out of nineteen board members. Now, why do you need nineteen? I don't know. I mean.
That's a lot.
That, that's a lot. But seventeen out of nineteen live in Tuscaloosa and they're all great people. I mean, I, I see the names. They're all great people. But. If this is, if you're trying to promote this as a Northport, we're rooted in Northport, we love Northport. Why are you not getting Northport people to serve on your board or at least half?
It's a good point. Yeah.
So. I can tell you. If. If there was a Tuscaloosa Amphitheater Board. And it was majority Northport.
That would be an issue.
I would hope y'all would make sure we could annex that into the Northport and have a good time.
Absolutely.
But I, I think.
Could you book better acts if you did that?
We would try. You know, and I think, I think they do a great job with what, what they have because. People passing through on a Tuesday or a Thursday night.
And, and the new upgrades are gonna help tremendously there.
I, I agree.
Get some bigger acts and.
And I, I think it's done a real, a real good job. And I, and I joke about that with. If it had a board, you know, could we try to lure them to, to Northport, but I think that's sort of what you get is. You get all these board members that live in Tuscaloosa and. It's like, hey, Tuscaloosa could do this or another area could do this.
And like saying, like say if I was not living here and somebody was coming in like, hey, let's go to this concert. And stay at this hotel. Next day we'll go to the water park, then we'll drive back home. Now there's not shit to do. And go shopping, you know. Like so, like you said, beginning like helps each other out.
You can go square dancing at the community center.
Couple breweries in town too, you can go.
It's Matt's soapbox.
We need more, that's for sure.
We do need more. I'd love to see a distillery too. In Northport.
Maybe where Kentucky was.
Or the community center.
Well, I can tell you after last night, community center is there to stay for right now and Kentucky, we hope they stay. Uh, we, we really do. I mean.
Go to the tire store then. That's open now.
Can we get that tire store in the shopping center?
Tire store will be there.
The tire store is gone, so we can put a distillery there. Perfect. A distillery would freaking kill it right there.
Oh, it would.
In between Forest Glen and Bellmead Bristol Park.
Well, I think it would do.
Have a distillery where you could like go visit like Avondale and have drinks. Go shop, Publix, get some groceries. That would kill it right there. Anybody listening should open one. But they need a golf cart trail between Publix and Bristol Park. They shut, I don't know who it was. Somebody shut that down. They were gonna build one. They didn't. So you could drive your golf cart to Publix. Now you can't.
That would be pretty neat.
Yeah, they were gonna build like a bridge and all in that little valley, but somebody shut it down. Don't know who.
Haven't heard that one, but.
It's not your district.
I live very close to it.
I don't have a golf cart anyway, so I don't really care, but.
You're right.
I would love to take my golf cart to a grocery store.
It would be nice.
I got a buddy, he offrodes his golf cart from Glencrest all the way to my neighborhood to hang out. Really? Even though Forest Glen has a gated lock because.
So you go around it?
They're super snobs. Lock gate, which is even Pritchett Moore, they wanted to build a nice connecting between the neighborhoods and Forest Glen shut it down.
I, I remember that and I, I mean, that's not my district and I, I'm sure there's some valid reasons for that, but.
They didn't, they didn't want traffic, kids, traffic or something. I'm like, they're doing it anyway, off roading and making mud tracks everywhere. But it's a valid reason. Like my buddy, he lives in Glencrest, so he'd have to drive down sixty-nine, down Mint Larry to come to my house. So he drives his golf cart. So on Friday nights we drink. He drives his golf cart through the neighborhood and go home. He's not getting in his seven thousand pound tundra and driving down the road. He's being responsible, even though he's illegally going through the woods to get there. Which a lot of other people do the same thing.
I hear the traffic connotation all the time. Or, or anything in, in regards to development or anything. It drives me nuts because. Who are you to say that you're the only one that should be able to drive here or, or to, or to build here or to. I, I don't, I don't get that because at one point, every one of our houses were vacant land. That wasn't developed. So it's a, it's okay for me to, to do that and live there, but it's not okay for you to build across the street or.
People don't like change. That's, I think that's gonna be the name of this podcast. People don't like change. Cause it's true.
Well, look, I like change. I, um.
Most, we'll put, most people don't like change.
Most people don't like change. So I'm gonna ask that, that we finish this and we change to another beer.
What we got over there? What we gonna finish with?
Say we do my Buxton. It's a blonde ale. It's kind of, kind of soft. Unless you want to do a stout.
Or you want to try that Kentucky.
You want to do the Kentucky?
Let's, let's do a coin flip.
Or we got Choco Vezza down there, which is also good if you've never had it.
Or I can pull some bourbon off the wall.
The brown can.
Or we could just do all of them.
You, you like a darker beer?
Not, not usually, but look, like I said before, the three kinds of beer I like.
Let's try, let's try the Choco Vezza. See if he likes that one. We'll finish, we'll finish with that one because I gotta go adult in a minute. And it's that time of day. I go get kids from school and.
Gotcha.
All that fun stuff. Take them to gymnastics.
Sports park. I never heard about the sports park. Well, I feel bad because y'all are.
I don't know, we're professionals. We'll talk sports park and drink Choco Vezza. This is by Stone Brewing. It only comes out once a year. Next year they're not making it. It's a Mexican hot chocolate inspired stout. Fantastic.
It is good.
I usually don't like stouts and I don't like hot chocolate.
Well, it also has coffee and peppers and vanilla in it, so.
I don't like coffee. I like peppers and vanilla though, so.
Might have been a shitty choice, but we have this one downtown. Talking about different beers, so.
Once again.
And we can pour that out and put, grab another one.
Yeah, we can get a dump cup.
You, you will never see me pour out a beer. I will, I will drink whatever's in this glass.
That sounds like, that sounds like Giovanni. I was like, if you don't like it, dump it. He like, oh, I'm drinking it. I'm like, I got a lot of other shit we can drink. He's like, no, I'm gonna finish it.
No, no, because this, just because, like I said earlier, I don't like IPAs typically. Well, we had two, is that correct? No, one was ale. But the other one was IPA. I liked it. Yep, so.
Every one of these beers so far has been really good.
I love this beer.
It's not your typical stout, which I love. I mean, that's, that's great.
What you think?
I like the peppers on the back.
This one, this one does not have an aftertaste either.
It's Stone makes a fantastic beer.
And you said that's only one time a year?
Yeah, and next year I don't think they're doing it.
Why, why do they only do it one time a year?
I have no idea. We have the Stone rep coming on a few weeks hopefully, so I'll ask him.
Think it's a marketing.
Marketing thing.
I get that.
Maybe it's harder to make and they have to shut down a line. I'm not really sure.
Kind of like your Pappy's.
Is there cinnamon in this?
Yes.
I could say that.
And nutmeg.
Okay, maybe it's a nutmeg. I'm, I don't know, it could be cinnamon.
Stout brewed with coffee, chocolate, paisa peppers. Paisla? I don't know. I don't know that word. Vanilla, cinnamon and nutmeg.
Say whatever you want to and I'll say yes.
That's good to pick up that cinnamon out of that.
Can you, can you tell it?
Now that you said it, I really can, but yeah.
That's one we have downtown and like it fits us perfectly. It's a Mexican hot chocolate. It's winter time, Christmas time. It's fantastic with Mexican food. People won't fucking order it. Try this beer. Let me get an ultra. Try this beer. It's fantastic.
See, and I taste the peppers more than anything.
It's great. Imagine we had some tacos right now, some fajita gumbo.
And a big joint.
It's good stuff.
His name is Giovanni.
That's good. So even though you don't like the three of those, you, what you think?
No, this, this one's, this one's good for, for stout.
It's like you probably wouldn't order that one.
No, I wouldn't.
If you looked at the stouts, got chocolate, coffee, you're like, I don't like any of that stuff, but it's good though.
It is good.
And you wouldn't probably drink more than one.
You wouldn't.
I mean, I would, I, I could, I would probably drink two of these.
Eight point one percent. I mean, I wouldn't drink it after I drank three others.
I drank four the other night.
That I don't doubt. With a funnel? Was a funnel involved?
I didn't funnel that one. Need to bring that funnel over here.
Okay, I will give this one a one thumbs up. Just because of my personal preference, but. The, the other ones that we've had have all been two thumbs up. Y'all, y'all done some good choices today.
And the one you rolled.
I still want you to try the, the Kentucky and see if y'all give it a two thumbs up or not.
Yeah, we'll pull it out.
We'll try them all out. So tell us about the sports complex. We'll, we'll end with that conversation since we all got adults at that. That just kind of work.
Have you, uh, have, have y'all seen the, the, the rendering? Yeah, and trying to brand that area too with the, with the different names. Northport Shore. And then we, of course you hear people grabbing about it's a river. There's not a shore, you know, or whatever.
Shoreline.
Yeah, there, and if you, if you research that. It is called a shore. It can be for a river as well. It's just not what people normally think of. But you're trying to, you're trying to brand that area to say. This is not just come to Northport Sports Complex.
Yeah, you're trying to give it a unique name.
And so you're trying to brand that.
It's like this Choco Vezza. I don't know what Choco Vezza means, but if it said Mexican hot chocolate beer. Choco Vezza sounds cooler.
What does Vezza mean?
Vezza means beer. I don't know what Chaco. I don't know.
So what does survey that mean?
It's beer. I guess it's like, you know, Vesa, like it, end of beer. Not that deep into Spanish vocabulary to know.
I, I figured, I figured you have learned a little bit more over the years.
I'm fairly fluent, but I'm not into like the, you're the English major, so.
I could do the English, but that's not English.
I'm not a Spanish major, so I don't know all the, everything else. I just know it's good beer.
F J H.
That's the, that's the name of the episode. F J H. Nobody likes change.
Can we get that for reelection?
I started it.
You did?
I made this at home.
Well, most of the time it's, it's hog is lining his pockets. So my postcards, I'll go ahead and tell you for twenty twenty-five. Cause you do mailers. They're hundred dollar bills with my face on them.
F, you gotta put F J H in there.
I can, I can put that at the bottom as the serial number.
I'll, I'll help you make it. I'm a marketing expert.
And that's, that's what it's gonna be.
That's awesome.
Reel Lake Boss Hog. Reel like boss hog.
FJH.
FJH. That, that, that is if I run again.
Are you going to? Are you still debating?
That's what I'm saying, I, I, I will debate that. My, my thing is that I told you at the beginning of the podcast was. I know at some point my, my curtain will be called.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, little known fact about Northport, no council person has ever served. More than three terms.
Is there a term limit or is this?
Not, not a term limit, but no, but nobody's ever served more than three terms.
So you might be like eighty on there and with dementia and can't talk, just like our president. Through the little dementia shuffle, walking to the chambers.
But, but I will at, at probably December or January of twenty twenty-four, January of twenty twenty-five. I'll probably put it out there on social media. What do you think?
Hmm, yeah.
Would you, would you like for me to run again?
Will the water park be done by then, you think?
It will be May of twenty twenty-five when it's open.
Okay, so that, when's the election? November twenty twenty-five or?
August twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'll put it out there. If people want me to run.
Yeah.
My family's okay with me running. But. If they don't.
Yeah, it tastes like pure shit.
So, so I was.
Really?
I was correct, huh?
I don't know, see what y'all think, but. You might like it since you like, since you like Michelob Lite, you might like it.
Michelob Lite's really good. I'm not a big fan of Michelob Ultra, but I love Michelob Lite. I really like Michelob.
Let me taste it again.
So eight percent of this goes back to charities.
Fucking charities.
But I mean, I guess if they're not selling it, it really don't matter.
I'm not a fan of that one.
Okay.
It's okay, it's alright.
I'm, I'm gonna.
It's pretty smooth.
I'm gonna try it, but like I said, after, it was after I drank a lot of bourbon that day.
Yeah.
So you just had beer today.
We don't know what he drank before he got here then.
True.
He could have got that, one of those last boss hogs up at, uh.
Well, it says here on my scorecard. That. And, and I quote, because I'm, I'm not on the podcast trying to use foul language, of course. But that's absolute pure shit.
I agree with you.
Really?
Two thumbs down for me. I wouldn't, like if I ordered that, I would just dump it. I wouldn't drink it.
Hold up, you know what that tastes like? If you were sitting, if we were sitting here at this podcast. And we've tried all these beers. And we didn't rinse out the glass and you come and rinsed out the glass with water.
Or piss.
With water, with all the, with all the residue of every other beer and say, here, drink this. That's what it tastes like to me.
It doesn't have a lot of taste at all.
I hope that charities.
And it's kinda flat, yeah.
Not a fan of that one.
Dude, they could do a hundred percent to charity at that point. You don't sell any.
And I, and I usually love lagers and, uh.
Yeah.
That one is, that one is not good. I think that's one of the first ones we.
It's out of Montana.
Unanimously, we're on the.
It's the official unofficial beer of Montana.
Not going to Montana.
Well, I can tell you, I've never been to Montana and I.
Plan on going.
I don't plan on going.
Is that rainbows on it?
Lots of mountain.
I do like that it's eight percent back to.
That is.
I feel like that should, that should bump it up on the scale a little bit.
But it doesn't, it's that bad.
To pour it down the drain?
Yeah, it's that bad. I'll just give, I'll give some money myself to charity just to drink that.
Give him three dollars.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want your beer, but here's some money.
Pure shit.
Guys, I can, I can tell you, and I, and I hate to be this way. I can't end on that. That can't be, that can't be the last thing that I have.
We can, we can give you something off air that's good.
I'm doing, I'm doing Buxton right now.
I'm doing Buxton.
He's gonna try it.
Try the Buxton.
This is a, I grew up in Texas.
Okay.
In this town right here.
What town is it?
Nederland, so southeast Texas.
Okay.
By Louisiana Beaumont, so pretty close. But this brewing company has grown tremendously and.
South Padre Island?
Not, uh, that's.
I've heard of that. I've heard that's a fun place to go.
That is fun for like spring break and all.
Yeah.
But have you, I don't, have you been to Texas beaches?
No.
Yeah, it's like Black Warrior, water, the water is.
Okay.
So beaches aren't, but South Padre is the place in Texas.
You know, we, I went to. Uh, my wife and I had our ten year anniversary a couple of months ago and I went to, uh, Carlsbad, California.
Yep.
And very ritzy area, very nice. It was cold as everything.
Was it?
Yeah, I mean, the west coast.
Yeah.
It's totally different than the east coast or the Gulf or, or anything else. I was thinking, we're gonna go out here and. You know, September, it's still gonna be hot. My wife was freezing on the beach. She's in like long sleeve shirts.
Now is it rocky there?
Yeah.
So the, the beaches, I mean, the whole coastline.
I was like, this is the only time I get to see you like in a bikini or something, you know? You're gonna wear a long sleeve shirt.
That wind coming off, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm. I actually broke my ribs while I was there.
What? Now how, how did that happen?
I, I tried to surf.
Did you?
Yeah.
So you got up on a surfboard?
I did, uh.
That's impressive.
I, I haven't done that since I was like fifteen or sixteen. And so I was like. I'm gonna take surf lessons while I'm out here.
That's cool.
Cause, cause they had good waves and that, that was something they offered and. And so I, I, I was doing okay trying to get up. It, it had been a long time since I'd done it and I'm a lot older. We're trying to get up on a surfboard.
Yeah.
And, and so I'd get up a little bit and I kept getting up just a little bit more and a little bit more. And then. One time I tried to get up and fell back down and my ribs hit my knee and hit the board.
That's impressive though.
And I'm sitting there going. Like Danny Glover, the on Lethal Weapon, if you've ever seen that movie. I'm too old for this shit. My wife sitting back laughing, taking pictures, you know, of course. And, uh, thinking I'm just the dumbest thing ever for even trying.
I disagree, cause I mean, what guy doesn't wanna surf?
I know, it, it's, it's fun and now, in, in surf, you see, you watch people surf and they're professionals.
Right.
They're going up and down on the waves.
You're just trying to stand up.
All I wanted to do was just stand up and ride the wave in, yeah, that's it.
Did you do that?
Yeah, I, I did, like two times, you know.
That's fucking impressive.
And then.
Y'all back on there or are we still off?
Yeah, we're on, dude, this is.
I don't know what we're doing, but.
It's still the shit beer?
But I've, I've canceled all afternoon appointments, you know, I'm.
I just got, I got a, I got about ten more minutes and I gotta adult.
Why don't you hand me that cup and, uh.
Dump cup.
I usually don't pour beer out.
Yeah, I dump mine too, down my throat.
That one's gross.
Where'd you get that beer? Which freaking pawn shop?
Which one?
Adams Beverage.
The, the Montuck Cold Snap?
That's gross.
It, it's a. I saw it sit, I saw it sitting in the, in the cabinet and I thought, surely y'all don't like that one. Yeah, I'm glad y'all never had it.
It was one the rep gave me just to try. He gave me a bunch of different samples.
Well, I'm glad I gave you all the, my version of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Prior.
Yes, I'm gonna cut out the last five minutes and we'll start over.
Oh, we got him surfing.
There's a damn truck.
Is that a truck?
Let's try this one, then we'll.
Is it a beer truck? Bringing in more?
Sounds like a UFO.
Some heavy pours, Matt.
Holy crap, that's a lot of beer we drank.
Well. Bourbon you can't do that with, beer you can.
Behind you. We did that before you got here.
Yeah, we did a four bottle test.
Under thirty dollars.
I'm not gonna lie.
Early Times is underrated.
Yes, it is.
It's underrated.
It's good.
So you, do you know which one won out of those four?
What do you think? I can't see it, cause we don't have a fourth camera set up over there.
Okay.
So we got Buffalo Trace, Evan Williams Bottled and Bond, Early Times, Bottled and Bond and Rebel One Hundred.
I've never had Rebel One Hundred, so it's.
I hadn't neither.
It's kinda hard for me to say what won, but. I mean, just looking at that list, you would think Buffalo Trace, is what you would think.
Buffalo Trace was number one for me and Rebel One Hundred was number two.
And I was opposite. I was one for Rebel One Hundred and two for Buffalo Trace.
Okay.
Early Times was three for both of us.
Evan Williams was the bottom.
It was like that Kentucky.
But Early Times was good.
I love Early Times.
Yeah, I'm not a big Evan Williams fan. I'll drink it.[1381.26]